Looked in the garage with the door open all day. It was like, this is nice. I washed my truck. Well, I washed my car yesterday too. And it was bad. Yeah, no kidding, it still is. At least I got the big stuff.
My car wouldn't get very good if I see them drive up to Cali.
So I didn't like the car.
Yeah, he's here. Sure put out the audience first probably, so.
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Hutchinson City Council for Tuesday, February twenty seventh, two thousand twenty four. We'll call a meeting to order. Uh, approve the council agenda. Any agenda additions or corrections?
Uh, Mayor Council, I don't have any additions or corrections for you. Motion to approve.
Second. Motion by Pat, second by Dave to approve the agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The CNA motion carries. Invitation is from Crosspoint Church. Good evening.
And I didn't see my own pastor in the back of the.
I was hiding back there, Matt.
Feel a little bad now.
I did show up, so it's good, right? Thank you, uh, council members for the opportunity to open this meeting in prayer and, uh, I'll pray now. Heavenly Father, we come before you because we recognize that you are the giver of all things good and, Lord, we desire good for our community. Uh, Lord, we desire good in the way of just a blessing over our community to thrive, for families to thrive, for our school system to thrive and be a great place of learning for students to grow into maturity. Lord, we pray for, uh, just our many of the community's services that are being offered here that just the wisdom and the resources would be available. And we pray for, uh, our city council members that make decisions that affect, um, our, our community, that they would have the wisdom to navigate those decisions and know what is best. And, uh, Lord, ultimately, um, I just come before you and just pray that, uh, hey, this would be a community that's united, uh, a community that cares about one another, that stands up for one another and accepts others into this community with love and grace. And that because of it, this community becomes stronger and stronger. Um, every single year, we praise in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Next, a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Recognition of gifts, donations, and committing service to the city. Does anybody have anything tonight? All righty, citizens addressing the council, just please come forward, state your name and address for the record. All right, approval in minutes. We have the regular meeting minutes of February thirteenth, two thousand twenty four.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Tim, second by Pat to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
The CNA. Motion carries. Uh, consent agenda will be done by one motion unless somebody pulls something off for a discussion. He is, uh, consideration for approval of resolution number one, five, six, nine, four. Resolution adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of conditional use permit for a pole type structure in a IC zone district located at eight forty-five Highway seven west with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, B is approval of resolution number one, five, six, nine, six. Resolution with adopting finding of facts and reason for approval of a preliminary plat for top ten option of Hutchinson with favorable planning commission recommendation. Uh, C is approval of items for the two thousand twenty-four street improvement projects. Letty number one, projects number twenty-four dash oh one, twenty-four dash oh two, twenty-four dash oh five, twenty-four oh dash six, and twenty-four dash oh seven. Um, there's a resolution underneath. There is one, five, six, seven, nine. Resolution declaring cost to be assessed in order in preparation of proposed assessment. Um, and resolution number one, five, six, nine, eight. Resolution for hearing on proposed assessments. Uh, D is approval of setting public hearing with respect to the issuing of revenue obligation by the city of capital for benefits of admin of group. And E is claims appropriation and contract payments. Anything anyone wants pulled off?
No. And make a motion to approve. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Pat to approve the consent agenda as presented. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Um, communications and we requesting petitions. We do have the planning and zoning uh, department. You're, you're in report, but we're gonna hold off on that for a little bit. So we ought to hear by six. Yep, as we need to be. Uh, we have no unfinished business, new business, uh, labor agreement with Minnesota Public Employees Association. That's a M N P E A.
Uh, Mayor Council, um, we do have in front of you tonight for consideration, um, a new uh, union or labor agreement with our officers union. Um, I know we spent some time with a negotiating committee, which, uh, Councilmember Burley and, uh, Mayor Firstier sit on, um, but we have come to terms with a two-year agreement. It includes a six percent grid adjustment, which matches the, the grid shift that non-union employees received. And also includes a dollar per hour base adjustment, um, with an effort to move our officers closer to, to our, our market numbers. And then there's some, also some language changes regarding in Juneteenth, um, and updating vacation sick leave agreement to match other non-union, um, employees. And so we've got both the marked up and the final agreement in your council packet. And I know the negotiating committee has recommended approval of, uh, of the agreement.
And make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries. Uh, resolution number one, five, seven, zero, one. Resolution amending the two thousand twenty-four position classification table and pay grid.
No, take the button there.
Thank you, Lynn. Evening, Mayor Council. So this, um, adjustment to the grid and the classification table uh, is driven by the police officers moving to grade one sixty-five based on, um, our compensation consultants recommendations, um, really mostly based on market data. Um, I don't know if you all know, there's a shortage of officers, um, and it's a really tough environment for the officers. So moving them to grade one sixty-five, um, that was an adjustment for the grid. That's a brand new grade. They'll be the only position that'll be in that. Um, along with the, um, position classification table with that officer being officer position being adjusted to one sixty-five. There's a couple of title changes and then the addition of a PRCE custodian into grade one hundred. Currently on the, um, part-time position, but we have a lot of consistency in that role, which is really great. Um, so they've outgrown that wage scale, so they're gonna be on the regular one. I would ask for your approval, um, amending the position classification table and pay grid. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Dave to approve resolution number one, five, seven, oh, one. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Kelly. Um, resolution number one, five, six, nine, nine. Resolution approving plans and specification ordering advertisement for bids for the VMF baseball field lighting project.
Good evening, Mayor Council. Um, included in your packet this evening is a resolution along with the, um, plans and specifications for the Veterans Memorial Field Lighting Improvement Project. Um, this has been a collaborative effort between city staff, um, the Huskies, and also Sports Lighting Authority, um, who we've contracted with to help with the plan specifications and the bidding. Um, this was identified from the facilities committee and has been on our facilities plan to be replaced in two thousand twenty-five. Um, due to an agreement and collaboration with Hutchinson Utilities, um, they have committed to paying and funding this entire project, um, which is estimated at about three hundred and twenty-five thousand. Um, so with their generous, um, commitment, we're able to move this project up to two thousand twenty-four. Um, so again, the, the resolution and the plans and specifications are included in your packet. Um, the ask would be that you approve the resolution and we can move forward. Um, if it moves forward, the bid opening will be held on March nineteenth, and then we will bring back the bids to city council on, oh, sorry. No, it would be March. Yes, um, would be back on March twenty-sixth for council approval. Any questions?
I'll make a motion to approve it. Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Excellent. Uh, resolution number one, five, seven, zero, zero. Resolution accepting bids and awarding contract for the new grandstand and other work at VMF Field.
Uh, Mayor Council, we did go out for bids. Um, we opened bids last week on, uh, the grandstand project and we received five bids, which was very, very excited and very, um, competitive on it. Um, ranging from a base bid of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred dollars to, uh, on the low side to the high side being just over six hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars. And then there was, uh, two bid alternates that were included in those. And just give me a second. I want to pull that up just to kinda go through what those bid alternates were, so you have an idea on what those detail. Of course, now I gotta find it. I don't know. I'm looking for the plans and specs on the, all right, here we go. So I got it, so. So when we went out for bids, we, um, obviously bid, uh, we bid the grandstand project and then, um, some of the concrete that was adjacent to, um, the grandstand. And so that was basically the area. Let me find a better picture here. Kind of this gray area is what was bitted for, for the work. And we had two bid alternates. Bid alternate two was some additional concrete work. Um, that's the concrete work behind both the dugouts. There was a path that leads, I believe, back to the maintenance shed for baseball. And then there was an additional patch. Um, there's a kind of a door that opens up to where you can drive a vehicle in. Um, we don't wanna have that be a part of the original bid package just because, uh, didn't want the cost to get over what our original estimate was, but we added that as a bid alternate, basically, which gives us the option to add it to the project or not. Um, Ebert Construction had the low bid of that five forty-seven, two hundred. They actually had the low bids for the bid alternates two. And so this is bid alternate number two, which would add seventeen thousand, three hundred and twenty-five dollars to the project if you were to accept that bid alternate. Bid alternate one was to enclose the area underneath the grandstand. Um, it doesn't show real well, but this is, uh, um, it'd be basically the area, you know, most of the grandstands are open. I think it was some galvanized steel, right, JJ? Metal cladding that would enclose that in. Um, the bid alternate for that was fifteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. One of the things that we discovered after the bid alternate, talking with our architect engineer, was that they didn't fire, they didn't put in the proper documents to fire code protect that. Um, and so most likely that area is gonna be used for storage. If you were to add that, you couldn't use it for storage at all because it doesn't meet the, the fire code requirements and you'd have to shrink the actual size. And so I think the recommendation from staff would be not to accept bid alternate one. If that's something that we wanna add in the future, we can go through that proper plan and make sure that that includes the, the fire protection that's required, um, the separation between the storage area and the bleachers. Um, but there, there was a recommendation to add the additional concrete work, which would be bid alternate two if you were to accept the project. And so with the bids received, we feel comfortable, um, yeah, that the low bid from Ebert Construction of five hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred, um, with bid alternate two is still within our, our budget of, uh, six hundred thousand for construction. We add another fifty thousand for, um, contingency on that. Just a quick reminder for funding. Four hundred thousand would come from the city with private donations and from both the Huskies and the groups that they've been working with of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
And make a motion to approve it with a yes on bid alternate two and a no on bid alternate one. It goes the other way around, isn't it?
No, that's right, isn't it? Yep, yeah, bid alternate one was the, was the grandstand enclosure, so.
Second.
Motion by Chad, second by Tim to approve resolution number one, five, seven, zero, zero. Any other discussion?
Yeah, I would like to see if, I was clear on it before. I'm still opposed to this strongly. Um, nothing against the Baseball Association raising the money, but I would like to see a limit put. If you don't have your two fifty, we don't kick in extra. I feel like that's something that we would just automatically do, and I won't, I don't wanna see that, to be very honest, because I, I feel like tax dollars could have been better spent. I feel real strongly on this, guys, and I just, uh, you know, you said that there's another fifty thousand contingency, so basically the city's looking to spend six fifty?
So the budget that we had was six hundred and fifty thousand dollars. It was six hundred for construction and fifty thousand for contingency. That's to be a smart plan, so if, if you get in there and you realize you got some bad soils and you, you gotta have a couple of change orders. So our budget was six fifty, of which four hundred was coming from, from the, the city. Um, I guess my advice, unless Mark had some legal, some other legal jargon, was that, you know, I mean, you could, there's nothing wrong with the council putting a cap of four hundred thousand dollars in of city budget in, or city dollars in this budget. I don't know if that would take a, a change of the resolution. That's already in budget. I'm not sure if you've got any thoughts on that, Mark.
Yeah, so you're talking about a couple of different things. You're talking about, um, you know, the motions that, the first thing is the motion that has been made, which was, you know, for the amount as presented in the resolution, and now you're talking about perhaps adding this contingency. That's certainly something you could do. It would require an addendum to the resolution, which you could do orally tonight if you wanted to, with the understanding that that would be um, the requirement that those funds, what I'm hearing you say is that those funds would have to be raised first before the city would commit the other four hundred thousand. Is that right?
Maybe I misspoke, but from what the Baseball Association said, they've got two hundred and fifty thousand. Should they not come up with that full two fifty, then we're gonna be stuck putting the rest in, because you're not gonna just quit the project.
Sure.
Um, I have concerns with that. Um, I guess, no, I don't wanna amend it. I just, uh.
Well, I. What would the Huskies wanna speak to that? I mean, how concrete is your two fifty?
Yeah, I'll speak. For Mayor Council, my name's Kyle Nestor. Yeah, so right now we get a hundred and fifty thousand from Citizens Bank. And we got ninety thousand already from other funds, from individuals and, and stuff like that. So, um, I have been, continue to raise money. I got three other businesses that I've talked to, given, given the information. They said they'd donate, so I just had to go back and do a follow-up. Last year, or I, another foundation in Hutch had money allocated towards this fund. But since they were not gonna give it to us, because the city wasn't gonna do anything yet, so that money that was allocated towards the Huskies went to somebody else. So now in June and July, I gotta reapply for that, those funds. So, um, there'll be some money through there too. Um, so I'm continuing to go out and raise money. And my plan is, when the stadium is built, I'd like to, um, for the stadium seats and other seats, um, baseball parks in the past have, um, gotten funds through people who, um, basically donate to a seat, buy a seat for five, six hundred thousand dollars. And then that's more funds that will happen with that. So that is my plan. Um, so, and with, I think with, um, a decision that is made tonight, I think more funds will come in from individuals, um, Husky, uh, fans and, and players, because I've spoken to a few and they said they'd donate, so.
Maybe, maybe to make things a little bit easier for the council, you know, Andy and Craig, we're on, we budgeted four hundred thousand dollars for this project of city money, right?
Four hundred thousand? I don't know if it's been pointed out, some of the donations are coming over several years though, so we'll have to front some of the monies.
Yep, but for us to go over and above the four hundred thousand would take an action by the city council. So you'd have to make a budget amendment to spend more than the four hundred thousand dollars. So just something from Pat to keep in the, in the, the back of your mind, if we get to that point where we're having.
Well, I'm getting Trump four to one, so it doesn't matter. You can say whatever you want.
Yeah.
So just wanna guess, speak my part.
Yeah.
Well, as long as we did budget four hundred, I think that's what we should stick at, and, um.
But it's gonna be more than that, Gary, because some of the funds won't be coming in on a timely basis, so I mean, it.
You know.
In the end, Gary, it won't be, hopefully.
On the, on the other part, I think one of the projects that we've done before, and I think those were the band shell at River Song, right? We kind of, it's, we kind of fronted the money for that, didn't we, Andy?
Yeah, we're still getting paid over that one too. But, you know, I didn't mean to point that out as a negative. I just mean, you guys needed to be aware of the, we're short of other city monies. It's not an issue.
So some of the people that have donated already, they're on their, this will be their third year, because I've been doing this for three years. And then we do a three-year contract, three-year deal, so this is their third year putting the money in. Citizens Bank, um, will do a three-year contract, so, um, so I mean, like, I've been doing this for three years and it's on its third year of, of donation, so then those ones are coming in.
But I think that's what you have to keep in mind, is, you know, you're accepting this bid at five eighty. That's what you can get on the hook for until those donations come in. That's what has to be understood.
Mm-hmm. Right.
So could we?
Cause you said you've raised a hundred and fifty.
Well, no, I've raised about almost two fifty.
Okay. So we're saying we're on the hook for that, but if you've already raised two fifty, wouldn't that, that would cover the five, if you added the two fifty to, so the city would be covered from that first two fifty, or from the two fifty onto the four hundred.
If we're getting more questions than this, we need, let's take a poll.
Yeah.
Yes, I'm comfortable with that.
This, this has to be discussed.
We, we budgeted six hundred and fifty thousand, of which two hundred and fifty thousand will come from donations.
Right.
Yes, we don't have those donations in hand right now. I think Pat's concern was that, at the end of the day, the city is contributing more than four hundred thousand dollars to that project.
I'm coming again, additions, attraction, whatever you want.
Well, I think that we should stay, if we budgeted four hundred, I think that's what we should stay on. That's my feeling. I don't know what the rest of you guys feel.
And like I said, from a, from a technicality standpoint, anything that would happen to be over that far, you guys would have to.
Approve.
Approve. So.
Any other discussion? Call a motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, say nay.
Nay.
Roll call. Tim?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Anna?
Nay.
Ken?
Aye.
Aye. Passes four to one.
Gary, go back up to.
Okay. Anne, you're up.
Next.
You're short and sweet. You're under fresh.
I told Matt to just tell you guys to read the packet. Well, I put the packet, but he's gonna pull.
I read most of it. It's drying some spots down.
Yeah, you're not kidding. Tell me about it. Let's see if I can find what I'm looking for now. Let's see here. And then Danny, just need to switch it over and turn off the screen. We have lots of files. Let's see, presentations.
I'm the same way.
So, uh, here I am, giving you the annual report again. It just seems like I was doing this last year. And obviously, we just had the workshop on housing, so a lot of, uh, what I have is a little bit of a, uh, kind of a repeat of that. But this is kind of an overview of our department. Um, the, the four main areas we have are planning, inspections, uh, then the building code enforcement, and then rental inspections, and then the other thing I probably noticed is JJ with the facilities. He just left. A little bit different than the rest of the, the zone, planning and zoning department. Um, again, I'd like to just touch on our primary services, long-range planning, redevelopment, our zoning subdivision and administration, building code administration, building permit issuance, reporting, plan review. And again, things like the housing, long-range planning is, is one of the things we do, so, um, that's kind of the main things we do. Um, twenty twenty-three accomplishments, as everybody probably knows, um, and kind of what we talked about earlier, with interest rates being high and some other economic conditions, our, our valuation was down a little bit. Uh, years ago, if we would have said twenty million dollars, valuation was a down year, I would have thought crazy. But, um, that's kind of what the numbers have kind of gotten to these days with, with just the cost of everything going up. Uh, we did complete the work on a growth planning study. Um, we worked with the Hutchinson Area Joint Area Planning Board. That's a planning commission, really, for the area around the city of Hutch that the McCloud County Commissioners are the ultimate authority for. And then also, um, we started our downtown plan project, and that's kicking off this Thursday, um, with our steering committee. Um, couple of expected projects this year. Um, Michael Court Northwest, we talked about that earlier. Um, that top ten options plat that you just approved on the consent agenda. That's a thirteen-lot, single-family, um, we're talking about split-entry walkout lots, so that'll be a good thing for the community. I always seven west, some, some commercial work, obviously continued residential development, and then there's a chance that this uh, Les Schwab Tire Center down by Menards, they get a start in late two thousand twenty-four. They're not sure if it'll be late two thousand twenty-four, early two thousand twenty-five. And then usually, you know, we're only in February, there'll be some projects that just pop up out of nowhere that, that end up adding to the list. And the other thing I guess I'll say is, is that, you know, we're hopeful that the interest rates, inflation, worker shortages kind of sorts itself out a little bit, probably as everybody is, but quite frankly, I think this year is probably gonna be a lot.
Probably as everybody is, but quite frankly, I think this year is probably gonna be a lot like last year. In terms of what we see in for development and whatnot. See here. I won't bore you with all their planning commission items, this is all information that's you saw in your packet, you can let me know at the end if there's questions. Uh, the building department, you know, we continue to provide uh, services to the community from the building departments. Uh, one of the challenges we see quite frankly is, is that. Um, we're really the only jurisdiction in the area that has building, um, code. Um, for instance, McLeod County, they don't have building, you don't. Now they have, no, no building inspectors, um, you don't really have to get it. You get a permit, but there's really nobody that checks up on it, so if you're a licensed contractor, you're expected to build to the code, but nobody checks it. Um, same with a lot of the other kind of rural areas, um, some of the smaller communities aren't probably as up. Maybe as we are on code issues, so we get a lot of complaints from contractors that. Maybe we're too strict and whatnot, and, and reality is, is I think we're just enforcing the code. And a lot of these other areas aren't being where we're located, you know, people come out from the Twin Cities. They think we're real easy to work with, and then sometimes people from the community or other areas southwest, north. Think that we have all these rules, when in reality, we're just enforcing the building code. So, if anybody has any questions or'd like to talk to me about that, certainly give me a call. But that's one of the struggles we have, is sometimes, is people think that we're being difficult, and again, a lot of these are mandates. That come down from the state, um, and we are just, have to enforce those things. So that's what I'll say about that part of building code, um. Building permits issued. This is an interesting thing, you know, we issued more building permits this year than we did last year, the year twenty-three to the twenty-two. But our valuation was under half, so it, it just depends on the type of projects, is the, is the bottom line. Generally speaking, what we find is when the economy is, is maybe not quite as solid, or people are a little tighter with their money, they do smaller projects. Instead of bigger projects, so you still have inspections, but they're just not as large of, of financial projects. Um, so you can see kind of relative consistency here of, of our building, and what we have for building permits. Um, the big one up there is that hailstorm we had a few years ago, everybody needed a new roof. Um, construction valuation here, as you notice, twenty million, you know, the last several years, we've been up, um. You know, well over forty million, up here, one year up closer to seventy million. Just as an example, um, we talked about this in the housing workshop, and about just, you know, things in the Twin Cities compared to here. Um, we're getting a new software for the building department that we're implementing. And uh, the city of Casca uses the same software, and we went down there to do some training with their staff. And uh, I think we're at about two hundred and seventy-five million dollars valuation for, for last year. So, um, again, there's just, you know, things are great here, but compared to the metro area, there's, there's just a lot more. Money and people and projects, and, um. In general, Hutchinson's always had that more steady growth instead of the big up and downs. So, uh, that's valuation, um. Inspections, again, very similar to the year before, similar to that permit number you saw earlier. Um, dwelling unit construction, I won't talk a lot about that, we already talked about that at the last meeting. Um, this is a comparison of other communities with their growth. Um, you'll notice, um, some of the similar communities to us. Now, we're seeing more, more development probably than Red Wing, Marshall, New Ulm. Some even a little bit more than Northfield, Wilmer, you know, New Prague, but. Then you throw in some of those communities that are a little closer to the metro area again, you know, Conias, Monticello's, Buffalos, they're seeing more. Um, on the housing starts, um, but again, I think where we're at isn't necessarily a bad thing at all. I think the, uh, you know, rather than having these big huge jumps up to a hundred and eighty and then down to something lower. And everybody stuck a bunch of money into a whole bunch of subdivisions, that kind of, like I said earlier, burst the bubble back in two thousand eight and nine. Isn't necessarily a good thing. So, let me just see if there's anything else I wanna highlight. Um. Really, I think that's about it, um, things have been, again, going quite well for us. Um, we're trying to do a good job of, you know, outreach with the community. Um, asking the questions, being proactive, getting ahead of things, you know, for, not only for ourselves, but for the, for the residents. And then the other thing I'll note is our, our rental registration program is continuing to go well. I decided not to include the slides on that this year, but overall, um, every year we do that program. People are getting more used to, have less issues with, I guess, the idea of a rental program. A few years ago, people were mad we were inspecting them, and now they're a little bit more fine with us coming in to take a look. To make sure things are, are good. I wish I could say our, uh, rate of failure on. Um, carbon monoxide detectors, smoke detectors and things wasn't as high as it is, because quite frankly, holding the number one. Um, tools to help somebody if there is a fire, to be safe, and we, we see a, a quite high, a number of. Of failures in those areas, and again, it's just as simple as checking your batteries and making sure things are right, but. With that, I would, uh, open it up to any questions, if you have anything for my report that you had questions on, certainly let me know, otherwise, uh, thanks for your time.
Pat, thank you for the good night's sleep last night, cause he said he wrote it, he was reading, and he fell asleep.
Next year, I'll make it a little bit more lively. Catch that, that insult I had in there.
He fell asleep before he got to that part, yeah. Thanks, Dan. Uh, governance, we have, uh. December two thousand twenty-three preliminary financial and investment reports. Planning Commission minutes from November twenty-first, two thousand twenty-three. Library Board minutes of November twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three. Hutchinson Housing Redevelopment Authority Board minutes from January sixteenth, two thousand twenty-four. And, uh, Public Arts Commission minutes from December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three, and January tenth, two thousand twenty-four. Tom, do you have anything for us tonight?
Nothing tonight.
Alright, thanks, uh, how about you, Mike? Talk about the airport quick, did they, did they have to come out and do the final check? Got asked, that's good, alright, thanks, Lynn, do you have anything else for us?
Nothing more.
Dan?
Nothing more than I already shared.
Okay, thank you, Andy?
Nothing.
Kelly? Mark?
Nothing.
Swing and a miss, I think you guys wanna get out of here. Ken, start with you.
Nothing.
Matt, Timmy?
Uh, the Sustainability Committee didn't meet this month, so we'll meet next month on all of that, otherwise, uh, nothing.
Alright, thanks. Dave?
Well, planning commission, uh, met, uh, two weeks or so ago, and, uh. You saw the results of that, thirteen lots are gonna open up, uh, out on the north way, east, uh, side of town. I had a, uh, Mid Minnesota Development, uh, RTC meeting this today, um, and, uh. Just to let you know that the government has, uh, got their eye on us old people, so. Uh, sure, hey, from transportation to housing, to, to whatever it might be, so. Uh, there's information out there and, uh, just gotta get to the right spot, but I don't have that. I was gonna bring that with me and forgot, so, that information, I wanna give that out every time I give a report, because.
That's why they, they are eye on you.
People are, not everybody, I mean, a lot of people run on their computers, so, they need that information. That's about it.
Thanks, Steve. Pat?
Uh, Public Arts, we, uh, met last week and chose, uh, Lynn was there, we chose the sculpture stroll things. I think there was forty-one submissions and we picked thirteen, or we picked, was it eleven? Eleven, and then two at large, Citizens Bank and, uh, Bridgewater picked their own. But this year, from the time that they submitted, well, they had to be in like February, there were like three or four that. Had already committed to other towns, so we kinda had to revisit it, anyway, some neat sculptures, so. They'll be taking the old ones down, the new ones, I think, May, they'll be up, or May, June, they'll be up, so. It's a good meeting, there's a lot of, a lot of interesting artists that, uh, do these sculptures.
That's it?
That's it.
Matt?
I don't have a whole lot, just to note that the downtown steering committee is gonna be meeting later this week, so that project is. Gonna be kicking off here, so.
Alright.
That's it for me.
Alright, thanks. Um, airport, uh, we're gonna meet Thursday, or meeting, um. FAA, uh, just Mike said that they come out and gave the thumbs up on the lighting project for the runway and. The tower, so that's it for the, for the airport, and, uh. HRA, um, just kinda. These are January numbers, uh, we had, uh, in January, we had, uh, twelve new listings. Um, so, there, there's, uh, houses for sale, um, but, uh. Not a lot. Not, not a lot, not a lot, so, but, uh, otherwise, that's about it for me, and, uh.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion by. Second, hey, Chad, adjourn. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, Gary?
Four minutes to spare.